Okay, we'll call this regular session to order. Council, the date is September 2nd. The time is seven, about 7:00, 10, 7:08 actually. PM, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. I think I only seen Jacob on the screen, so he might still have control, Matt.
Nope, I'm, yes, he does, but I, I could have took advantage of that. You, you had your chance, dang it.
Okay. I'm gonna start off with our council city, our city council mantra. Number one, I am a city council. I'm on the city council as an advocate for quality of effective city services. I will do what I can promote cost sensitive and professional services to city residents and visitors. I will do what I can to promote a safe environment for businesses and families. Number two, it is my responsibility to contribute to the stability is stabilized environment for the city. I am an opponent of uproar, dissension, and conflict. I believe in cooperation. Number three, I believe in routine. The greatest gift I can give city residents is to provide services that are predictable. Number four, every comment I make and every vote I cast, we motivate motivated by the question, what is good for the city residents and visitors? Number five, what I want from my family is what I want for all patrons of the city. Number six, I will champion the city. I will compliment and reinforce often. I will suggest and recommend when necessary. Number seven, I will support a majority position of the council. I may not agree, but once a vote is taken, I am with the others. Number eight, I will never come to a council meeting having made a promise to an individual or a group. Number nine, at all times, I will remember I am a city official who is purposing to serve and represent others and to act on their behalf. Number 10, courtesy is a rule. I will not break that rule. Number 11, a council meeting is a business meeting. It is not entertainment. It is not social hour. It is not question and answer session. It is a business meeting. And number 12, I am busy. Our council members are busy. The staff and administrator are busy. Everyone is busy. At this meeting, I will do what I have to do. I will do it as fast as possible. I will respect the time of other people. Okay, now we will open it up to visitor comments.
We do have a visitor comment. Hang on one second.
Is that me, I guess?
Yep.
Um, last Sunday, Steve Topaz wrote a letter to the Spotlight indicating that he is going to go home because he no longer has a voice at city council. Hallelujah. As far as I am concerned, go home and stay there for about two years. Ever since most Mr. Topaz has been elected, it has been clear that he has no interest in serving the citizens that he swore an oath to represent. Instead, his tenure has been about getting heavy revenge on the city for a flooded basement that was litigated, re-litigated, lost, and re-lost. Rather than move on with this defeat, he has made it his personal odyssey to do what he can to be as disruptive as possible because, quote, "I don't like how the city is being run." Mr. Topaz's letter is full of misinformation and outright lies. I watched the August 27th meeting in which Mr. Topaz was muted. He was not muted for asking questions about Halloween Town, the cost of the coronation, the rent due from the pot growers, or about parking in downtown. He was muted because he was attacking a vendor of the city that was contracted with the city of St. Helens. He claimed he wrote this letter as a private citizen, not a city councillor. That is an outright lie. He would only have access to the report to write to them in the first place because he is a city councillor. The report is not complete and has not been made public. He is using his office to launch an attack while claiming he is doing it as a private citizen and engineer. I don't know if he was actually an ever engineer, but I do know that he has never been a licensed engineer in Oregon and has been sanctioned by the court of Oregon for claiming he is an engineer. Mr. Topaz also lied about contractor, other city councillors not being interested in what is happening in with the tourism director. I have spoken to the city's tourism director directly and found that councillors Morton, Carlson, and Locken all had direct conversations regarding the upcoming Halloween Town event with ETC. During the tourism report, councillor Topaz didn't ask any questions, didn't appear to have any additional questions, and he was not muted during that portion of the meeting. This is documented on tape. You can watch it and see for yourself. It is also a lie, as he indicated, that the usual requirements to have a safety review has been eliminated. All parties have been consulted and will sign off on a plan before it is approved, including fire and police. CERT meets as well to go over the plan. ETC will continue to have meetings and conversations that are ongoing with these agencies and others as they have done for the past eight years. ETC has run a row organized event that has brought thousands of people to our town to spend money with absolutely no issues. Certainly, the pandemic presents some new challenges. The ETC has adapted and will continue to adapt to new regulations that will keep these visitors, volunteers, and citizens safe. This is not their first rodeo. In addition, it would be good for everyone to know that at the end of every tourism report, it specifically states that there is an option to meet one-on-one at any time with the staff of ETC. Councillor Topaz has never taken this opportunity. You should be more concerned that Mr. Topaz has initiated racist comments against Chinese vendors on at least two occasions and had been allegations of backdoor deals with the tourism director despite evidence to the contrary. Even during those comments, no one muted him, even though he probably should have been. You should be also concerned that Mr. Topaz has used his office for what he can get out of it personally and not what he can do for the city. This is a violation of ethics and a violation of oath of office. All this comes at a huge cost that is more than just the cost of your sanity. A recent public records request that I made to the city of St. Helens shows that the cost of thinning the city through June of this year and that the, and the lawsuits that Mr. Topaz filed had was over 228,000. The ongoing ethics complaint from Mr. Topaz has cost another $11,000. Legal fees regarding the sale of a property to the cannabis company was 58,000. Not to mention the lawsuit that the Petersons filed for which Mr. Topaz was involved cost another $21,000. That lawsuit also devalued the property that the city was going to sell by another 1.3 million dollars. Add in the cost of having to have an attorney present at all city council meetings because of disruption Mr. Topaz has presented, that adds in another $8,652 to June. And the still-to-be-determined costs during with grievances that have not been, that have already been filed by city staff, and you are looking at well over 1.8 million dollars that councillor Topaz has directly cost the city. We simply cannot afford Mr. Topaz's continued antics. So again, please go home and stay there. Alright, any other visitor comments?
I do not see any.
Okay, I'm gonna do a proclamation. Home inventory week for September National Preparedness Month. Proclamation, whereas each September is recognized as National Preparedness Month. And whereas Oregonians have witnessed and experienced natural disasters in our own community and whereas every community member can take active steps to protect their family and neighbors from natural and man-made disasters. And whereas every family and business in St. Helens is encouraged to take active steps to be financially secure after a disaster. And whereas every community member is encouraged to make sure that they properly ensure against fire, flood, earthquake, and storm. And whereas every community member is encouraged to create a home inventory to include as part of their disaster preparedness kit. Now, therefore, I Rick Scholl, Mayor of the City of St. Helens, do hereby declare that the first week of September 2020 be known as Home Inventory Week. And we ask that we join the cities across Oregon to encourage everyone to build a home inventory of their personal property and to speak with an insurance agent to make sure that they are financially prepared for a disaster. In witness to whereof, I have come to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of St. Helens to be affixed at St. Helens City Hall on this second day of September 2020. I do like reading those, they're kind of fun. Okay, let's go ahead and do some deliberations on the comprehensive plan map zone district change for Millard Road. Where's been a lot of talk about that. Jacob was very, very thorough. If anybody's got any deliberation on that, I'd be shocked.
We're done.
It just, I mean, I guess I would just say this, it's not, it's just my comment, is that the mixed use was landed on to give the council the greatest discretion to deal with all the wetlands and all the encumbrances on the property. And so we can do what's right for the community is why we went to mixed use. And the housing study just affirmed that, that thought. So I think that it's been felt, well-vetted and well-thought-out.
And looking at that, you're right, and looking at that around those unique wetlands that Jacob talked about right up front would be like a smaller, smaller zoning because for somebody to develop and it'd probably be like we suggest, maybe a senior area of living. It's totally up to whoever the developer is, but that was just kind of our thought process on mixed zoning. We did a lot of outreach to the county and Brady's attended, I think, pretty much every time this subject comes up, he's been there. So definitely keep that in mind about the commercial. Alright, any other comments?
Well, we've kicked this, we've kicked this can all the way to Ross Road and back many times. I mean, this is, this has been a long time. And Jake, if you did a great job, I agree with Jenny, councillor Carlson, 100% on what she said about the housing issue and about your thoroughness, which the mayor alluded to as well. So I'm in total support of staff recommendation.
Yeah, and the staff recommended a park in the other Ross Road, which we cannot forget is designated to be Dahlgren Park. That needs to be addressed. That was part of this whole land swap deal.
And in fact, so, so our recommendation, of course, is to approve it and then add a stipulation, the ordinance about the Parks Master Plan and that. The Ross Road property is an alternative. And in fact, on that, and that, what I showed you is an exhibit, and we can put a little stipulation that, you know, part to be called Dahlgren Park, just to emphasize that in our formal ordinances.
That'd be great.
Do we make motion to approve this?
I was, I just kind of, one other, one thing we didn't talk about, it's probably pretty clear, but the, the difference between a typical rezone and this, this proposal is that the city owns the property. So they have a high degree of discretion on what happens with the property through the disposition process. You know, you know, one end of the spectrum, just putting it on the market and see what happens versus, you know, working with a developer to get a, the desired outcome as far as, you know, housing types or park areas or those types of things. So we still have a, you know, it's on to a good use and it's also, we have the higher degree of control with the public ownership, so.
Great point. Somebody, I think I heard somebody start to make a motion.
Mr. Topaz.
To keep this thing, as we, as the staff is discussed with the large verbatim of Jacob.
What, I don't understand that motion.
I need an actual.
Jacob has described this with a large number of words quite completely. I'm just using his words and saying, let's go that way.
And it's recorded, so it's on the record.
So I officially needed somebody to make a motion now.
I move that comprehensive plan and zoning district map change from Millard Road, property owned by the city, with staff recommendations be approved.
One second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay, now we're gonna open it up for public comments on the, we had a, we're having a little kind of rate increase on garbage rates, mainly the drop boxes. It's very miniscule, they're just trying to adjust to their inflation as well as, and they have to go through the public process. So any comment, Matt?
I do not see any comment.
Okay. Resolution 1898, a resolution establishing drop box rates and superseding resolution 1863.
Will we approve resolution 1898 as read?
Second.
And motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 1898. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Award and bid contract, three North Mononia sidewalk improvements project for Emory and Sons Construction Group LLC in the amount of $590,149.50. And four, storm drain improvements at South Fort Heath and Twalton Street project for TTFP Construction Inc. in the amount of $47,519.
Move we award bid contracts, items three and four as read?
Second.
Yeah, motion's been made and seconded to award big contracts three and four. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
No, I'm an aye as well.
I had to read two and three, not three and four.
Oh, did I say two and three?
No, I said three and four.
It's two and three.
No, two is resolution 1898.
That's correct, you're correct, councillor Carlson.
I'm looking at it live on the city website, so.
Councillor Topaz, you may have an old agenda item where the proclamation was not.
We can agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, a proven authorized for signature, five, final plat for partition at St. Helens Place Apartments, and six, contract payments.
Will we approve and authorize for signatures, items five and six as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve authorized for signature five and six. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Consent agenda for acceptance, seven. Library Board Minutes dated June 8, 2020.
That's it?
That's it.
Remember, we have consent agenda for acceptance. I scrolled up and it disappeared, sorry.
That's it. Come to my second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion and second for consent agenda, seven. Library Board Minutes, Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Consent agenda for acceptance, eight. Council executive session, work session, and regular session minutes dated July 29th and August 19th, 2020. And number nine, accounts payable bill list.
Does it matter that you said acceptance instead of approval?
Yes, it does.
I move we can.
For approval.
I move we approve consent agenda for approvable items eight A and, or eight, eight. Number eight and number nine. I'm so stuck on the A.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda eight and nine. Council President Morton.
Aye.
Councillor Locke.
Aye.
Councillor Carlson.
Aye.
Councillor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I don't think we had anything we kicked up from the work session, guys.
I had a question about action items from the work session.
Okay.
We printed that property list and I wondered, because we didn't really delve into it. I wondered, just my own personal thoughts, I haven't conversed with anyone, you know, about what to do. But I wondered about a recommendation from staff, because I see a lot of edges out there. And I'm just, I'm just gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
If I knew, I've heard other people like, how do people buy that empty lot there that the city? How do they find out about that? And it's like, if there's stuff that we've owned for 10 years that we're not doing anything with, it's like if there's things that staff like said, make this go away, if they have a recommendation list for things that probably, when we have time, should go away. If we want additional information from staff.
Sure.
Like, you know, if we're not doing a project with, why are we maintaining? Why are we watching those items?
Sure, so, yeah, why are we holding on to?
I just thought more input from staff. We had them do that project, we had them do that process, but I thought, you know, maybe there's, maybe when they have a chance, not obviously not, the sky's not falling. But I just thought, thinking about all the other properties, the Millard Road conversation, the conversation about over by the DMV, all these little lots that maybe citizens don't realize we own. Somebody told me, it's like, all of a sudden, my neighbor owns the right of way as across the street from my house. How did that even happen? So I think.
Jenny, you got muted. Jenny, you muted yourself.
What happens?
There you go.
I just, you know, that's just my feedback on that list, is there was lots of little bits.
There is a lot of little bits on there, all over the place. And I think, so are you kind of like saying, maybe make them, are you?
I'd like to direct staff to like, if there's some, you know, if there, if there's things on there that's like, this stuff here just needs to be slid off the page. We need to do something with these things, whatever. If they think, do something with this or get rid of it, kind of thing. I just, if I owned, if there was a vacant lot next door to me and I could buy it and know that there was never going to be anybody else there, and that was going to be extra yard space or kids' play space, I would love that.
Well, I think, I think it's a great idea to at least announce to people if they ever thought they wanted to try to inquire. We've been getting, you know, some appraisals done lately that have been pretty, pretty expensive. So that's kind of a little shocking to me right now. I mean, as fiscally responsible now would be the time to sell city-owned property, but it's definitely not gonna be giving it away, that's for sure.
No fire sales. I just thought if staff had recommendation for stuff, or just to kind of start moving in that direction to like, we've talked about hiring a property manager, and it's like, maybe if we have our list of things we own narrowed down to stuff we actually are working on, it might help the process of getting things done. You know, if you, if you actually have projects and here's the property, here's the project, here's the property, that makes sense to me.
Jenny, I think it's a good idea.
Well, we were also talking about, you know, what happens if we have this big project and we're gonna need property, you know, pre-buying property for something else? I guess it fits in that same category that staff says, we kind of need this and we don't, kind of don't need that.
Yeah, I just thought some cleaning up, some housekeeping, just that list was way longer than I anticipated.
Yep.
I'd rather be quick and nimble for things that we need and things that our community wants than heavy on property we're not doing anything with.
Done. What do you feel?
Well, I thought that, I thought they, I thought that they, that list was quite appropriate so that we know, so that we know what we have. I mean, that's the most, the important thing. And it's up to us if we want to work with it. I think this, we aren't directing the staff to do anything more with that list at this point, but at least we're informed of what we own, which in the past, I would, I've been on this council for a long time, and this is the first list I've ever seen. So, yeah, I went over that, I scoured over it, and I go, and, and I see those kinds of issues. I think, I just wanted to thank the staff for doing that, and they can put it behind them. I don't think they have to act on anything unless we direct them. So, you know, I, I saw it as a positive thing.
Oh, no, I love the list. I love the, it was just way bigger than I ever possible.
He was talking about like little, little chunks of property here and there that maybe could be cleaned up as far as maybe sold, maybe sold or, you know, whatever. That's what I think I heard you saying, Jenny.
Yeah, I mean, I can sit down and, you know, highlight the ones I think and talk to Sue. I just thought it might be, you know, it was just the thought that occurred to me while reviewing the document.
Give, give somebody the opportunity to have the American dream, own a chunk of land and build a house.
There you go.
It's definitely obtainable for anybody listening up there.
There you go.
Dreams do come true.
That's all I had on the list of things we were going through earlier. That was just a thought as he went through it.
So definitely would like to put that out there. I mean, if anybody's listening, is that map on our city website?
It's, it's not readily available on our website unless you go into the meeting packet. I think what Jenny, if I'm understanding Jenny correctly, she's asking for staff to go back and work on that list and come back to you with a list of potential properties that the city could sell if you wanted to as a council.
Sure. Yes.
I mean, because I can look at them and think, oh, yeah, this one, this one, this one. And then city staff will be like, oh, she's crazy, you can't do that because this is for this.
Like we found out earlier, there was a big wetland that we inherited, it says developable.
Yeah, I mean, there's some stuff that they know the history on that is a, is a non-starter. So that's all.
Yep, no, that's a great point.
But just to not let the list, and they did that, all that work and just not let that work go the way.
Jacob put that on his queue, but make sure everything else is above his queue.
Yeah.
That's the last one on the queue, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any, I don't think we had any other stuff from our work session, though, that I recall. So I think we had a good, a good meeting earlier on the urban renewal. Hopefully our taxing agencies feel that, you know, that, that we're, we're just flopping some properties and looking forward to getting going on some projects. John Walsh, our city administrator, gave a report earlier talking about the waterfront and, and grants and looking like late October, November-ish, and it's really starting to happen, folks. I mean, the waterfront is gonna be developed, it's moving forward. We are, we are in the process of Plan B. So we still have Plan A out there, though. We've got our fingers crossed. And tomorrow I meet with the number of kids, the if I were mayor contestants, not just our winners and all their families. And I would like to invite any councillor who'd like to come down and have pizza tomorrow at noon. We'll be meeting up on the platform just across from City Hall, not down in the gazebo, councillor Locke. And I'll probably see a few, yeah, maybe at the Quanis meeting, but we'll be up there. And I know staff is gonna be there to answer any questions these youngsters might have. Olivia Fantis won second at state, and she was awarded $300 and a certificate. Congratulations to her. And, yeah, it was a very cool to represent at the Oregon Mayors Association. They have a second place winner there, so. Man, it's been hot lately. Been a lot going on. There's just, and we're gonna get another heat stretch. So if you're on the river, respect it, be careful. There's been a lot of drownings this year. Went over to Sand Island and camped out. Council President Morton, for the first time ever, I've lived here all my life, and I've never camped on Sand Island.
Did you take your own boat?
Yeah, I did, yeah. And I'll tell you what, those guys, the shuttle service they have, and with what bad Hendrix has got going on over there, man, that's got a ton, a ton of potential. And they've already done so much work, but it's got so much more potential in talking with him and what they envision over there. So him and Andrew Neme are doing a. Him and Andrew Neme are doing a fabulous job, they've hired a ferry crew that is just hard workers, so. Yeah, so, like I said, but if you're on the water, just be careful, there's going to be a lot of people out there fishing this weekend. Last weekend to fish for a couple of weeks anyhow, and it's all above Warrior Rock, so. That's all I got to report, let's go to Council President Morton.
Thank you, Mayor, and those are good words, we're really proud of what's going on with Sand Island. However, I, I want to segue kind of into some comments that I've been receiving about the parking. Issue that is causing down at the marina and I, you know, I told individuals that, yeah, I would report on that. Or I would. Get that information to the council, and then at the same time, if we go back in, in council history a bit. When we approved all that and when we talked about that whole idea of parking in that area. We looked at First Street as being a potential parking area. And then I'm talking about First Street down below, next to River Street, behind Brad's. His storage areas, I think that's a sixty or fifty foot right of way. It gives ample room for diagonal parking, and I'd like to see the staff kind of. Re-resurrect that because if it offers parking, why not look at it as an area for parking? I know that we vacationed some of that property to Brad, but is there a potential of a partnership? I absolutely think so because he indicated that at the time, it's a matter of public record, I believe, three years ago. Or whenever we started talking about that, so I see that as something that is. Kind of has manifested into some problems with the, with the live boards and the. People are in the houseboats and just the overall park, the overall traffic issue. Well, and the parking issue down there, and at the same time, we really need to take a good look at the ingress and egress. Of how to get emergency vehicles out of there, we do have a plan and I'd like to see the. You know, at some time, I'm not making a recommendation now, but I'd like to see us move forward on that. As take as, as a study of what we can do to alleviate the traffic jams down there and especially safety. I'm real concerned about fire engines getting down there, safety vehicles getting down there and getting out. So, you know, I mentioned that to people who had concerns. On another note, I really want to thank my fellow Kuanians. Who helped out on the cleanup out on Highway thirty in front of the Chamber of Commerce. And we spruced it up two Saturdays ago, but I want to give indeed a huge thanks to Public Works. To kind of prepping it for us, well, they did all the heavy labor, they did all the heavy work and they, they just go. Well beyond any expectations, I just mentioned it to Dave Elder that he would. That he would. Pardon me, I just mentioned it to Dave Elder that he would. If he could help out just a bit, and what he did was he went down early on and worked that whole area. And it just made it so easy for us, we watched the sign, we did all of that stuff and it was. Very, very fulfilling for me, anyway, I just want to thank the fellow Kuanians for, for that work party. And with that, I'll just, that's all I have.
Can I ask you something about the back way out of the marina area? Is there enough ground to turn that big hole or somewhere hole into a parking lot when you build the bypass up around the edge?
Is there enough what?
Ground to make a parking lot back there. If you're going from Second Street to First Street, you know, kind of along the edge, is there?
I don't, I, I don't believe so, this, but that's just my opinion, there's what that could, what that could facilitate. Would be an, an egress or an ingress of one way, one way or the other to get safety vehicles in. Or to get safety vehicles out, and so the parking area would be in, in partnership. But it's what I'm thinking is with Brad behind his diagonal parking, behind his storage areas.
But when I was just wondering, as I say, there's that little slot and hopefully it was just around me in there to put something in. He snagged the egress, that was the hope.
There, there is some. For parking, not a whole lot, but there is some, yes.
And that's why, that's why I'm asking the staff, or I will ask the staff to really take a look at it in terms of a motion. In the future.
Good.
Hey, Counselor Locke.
We had a executive board meeting on CAT today, there's. Kind of rumors running around legislature and the state and whatnot about possibly. Giving the, the money for the, the community action teams to other agencies. Because they, they claim that CAT hasn't done enough over the years. If you guys hear anything out there, when you run around the network and whatnot, just tell them that. Dan thought that, you know, Dan Brown, the director down there, thought that this, that. The office would probably maybe survive because of, we run the. No, the, for the, for the kids, the schooling and whatnot, that that would survive and whatnot, but, but he said probably like the. The, our little offices in Plaskin, in Philomac County would probably go away and things like that, certain. We, we definitely wouldn't be able to do near as much as what we have been doing as far as helping people and whatnot and. Somebody else taking it over would, I don't know, doesn't seem very efficient, they would have to go through the whole learning process. But anyway, so if you hear anything out there, just kind of maybe support CAT a little bit if you hear anything like that, that's it.
Thanks, Steve, they do a lot of good in the community.
They do.
CAT and all they do. Counselor Carlson.
A couple of things, I just, I remember the same conversation you remember, Council President Morton regarding the parking. When we did all that, so that was, I was in that meeting and I remember that conversation because you and I are both concerned. About emergency vehicles and egress when he loaded all that in, so he actually had a rudimentary drawing of such of a plan. So there was conversation, it shouldn't be strange, so it's, if I remember it the same as you, chances are it happened. So, the other thing is, I just am so appreciative of our parks. And even though there's not a lot of stuff going on, being able to load up my stuff and take my few clients and go do things. In such a beautiful area, you know, and have that right here in our community, how lucky we are, especially during this COVID time. The other thing that I just wanted to say officially is, last weekend, the National Guard troops came back. They could not do a huge event because of COVID, but the youth council and I are working on a welcome back, thank you. And cooperation with some of the organizers there and to do kind of a distant thank you for that. I appreciate all their service and they definitely make this community proud, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jenny, thank you for recognizing the National Guard and their return home. It was a long deployment for them.
One of the, one of the biggest in the area, so for such a small town, it was a big deployment.
Yep, not able to see them all, so, okay, any last, or Counselor Topaz.
It got dark in your room, Mr. Topaz, we didn't see you there.
I'll turn the light on.
Yeah, all of a sudden I.
All right. Okay, the sun went down, the library has been working with the rec department. For games and stuff in the park together to keep the kids moving and not rotting by doing nothing. That's become a, quite a successful operation and it's growing and it's needed. And they're going to expand even more into other parks, and that's kind of just because of personnel being creative and going like crazy. So that's a heads up for them too, that's it.
Okay, any other business that we forgot, any last comments? Okay.
Congratulations to our if I were mayor second place winner, we always have good, good entries and I'm just so. Proud of those kids and I just want to thank staff for sticking with it and getting the information out for these young people.
And it's just ironic that her stuff came to us today and then we are meeting tomorrow, that, it came from the Oregon Mayors Association.
Awesome.
Yes, all right, we are adjourned.
See you tomorrow.
Yep.